I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, we do the pledge of allegiance. Mike, you stand.
Yes, please. Pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America. And to the republic of which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, eternable.
And if may keep remain standing have a moment of silence. Uh, our fellow supervisor Carmen Batavio is not here tonight usually leads this. And this is a moment of silence to recognize our first responders. Uh, those who were on the front lines for us giving their best, giving their all. Uh, to our democracy and our freedom and our safety.
I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded. And we also have a court recorder because it's a one topic meeting. With a conditional use hearing. For a home occupation at fourteen twenty-two Arden Circle. Pass the meeting over to Ryan Jennings of our solicitor.
Good evening.
Good morning.
So I have a lot of uh preliminary matters to address uh to everyone before we get underway here this evening. Uh, I think we'd all be best suited with some uh introductions and groundwork. As to what this application is, what it entails and the process. That will be following here this evening. Uh, tonight's. Matter involves a previously recessed uh conditional use application. Before the East Goshen Township Board of Supervisors. Uh, the board is in receipt of a conditional use application dated April twenty-second, twenty nineteen. Of applicant Christopher Zampano. CZ Woodworking LLC. The subject property address is fourteen twenty-two Arden Circle. Which is tax parcel ID number fifty-three dash four dash one oh seven. And that property is located in the township's R two zoning district. If I make reference at any point to the subject property, that's the property we're talking about. Uh, specifically, the application seeks conditional use approval from this board. Uh, to operate a woodworking business. As a home occupation. Within a two-story detached accessory structure that's located on the subject property. The township's R two zoning district allows home occupations by conditional use, hence the application. Pursuant to zoning ordinance sections two forty-nine E one. And two forty dash three two J. Uh, by way of background, the conditional use. Uh, is a type of zoning approval. That can only be granted by township's board of supervisors after a public hearing. So that's why we're here tonight uh for this public hearing. The board pursuant to the township code has already legislatively determined. That home occupations are appropriate. And. Provided though, that the applicant can demonstrate compliance with the objective ordinance criteria. So that's the burden of the applicant here this evening. The board, in accordance with timing requirements pursuant to the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. Is timely convening tonight's public hearing. Uh, back on June eighteenth, twenty nineteen. The board commenced the proceedings, but continued the matter on the record. Announcing that we would uh recess until this evening, July ninth, twenty nineteen. At that time on June eighteenth, in case anyone is concerned, uh, there was. The board did not entertain parties, did not accept any evidence, and did not hear any testimony. So this is essentially a clean slate and we're starting. From the beginning here tonight. Uh, by way of some rules for tonight's proceedings. The board on June eighteenth did announce that there will be a two and a half hour uh time limit to tonight's proceedings. We'll essentially be calling a timeout at nine thirty PM or thereabouts. Uh, if we are not all the way through the various parties cases. Uh, if that is the case and there is a continuation, we will go off the record and determine a reasonable. And appropriate time to reconvene at a later date. This matter is being transcribed by a court reporter. And therefore must be conducted in an orderly fashion. Uh, the court reporter is charged with taking down accurately everything that's said. So it's very important uh for everyone to keep that in mind and speak one person at a time. I will be responsible for keeping order uh at tonight's proceedings. And uh, again, if there's subsequent continuation. Uh, for purposes of the application, it's important for everyone here to recognize. That the board of supervisors is essentially sitting as the judge and jury in this case. Uh, they may have questions of various witnesses during these proceedings. At which time I will direct and invite the board to ask those questions of those witnesses at the appropriate time. Otherwise, please keep in mind. The members of the board are sitting again as judge and jury. Uh, I would like to announce a few practices that should be followed by. All individuals to an order uh and assure an orderly decorum. Individuals who speak who are not represented by counsel should identify themselves as well as their address. Uh, if individuals wishing to speak are not seated in this first row here, I would ask that they please. Uh, approach the podium and use the microphone. This hearing is being live streamed. And it's important to recognize not only the individual speaking, where they reside, but it's also important to hear that for purposes of the record. Uh, for those that are not represented by counsel but have questions or opinions. Uh, I will direct. Those individuals at the appropriate time to or invite you to ask your questions and and deliver your opinions. The question portion will typically occur after all of the attorneys and the board have had an opportunity to question the witnesses. And that will pertain to specific witnesses. At the end of the proceedings, when all of the audience has been presented, all of the witnesses have testified. That is when members of the public will be invited to make public comment. So please recognize the difference between questions of a witness and public comment and opinion. I will introduce exhibits on behalf of the board of supervisors. I will thereafter ask if anyone in the audience not represented by an attorney wishes to uh see party status. And I'll explain what party status means. If you wish to be recognized as a part of these proceedings, a person or an entity must establish legal standing. Legal standing essentially means that you could be affected by the outcome of this conditional use application. Generally speaking, you must live in somewhat close proximity to the subject property or otherwise demonstrate to this board. That you could be affected if the application is granted or denied. If there is someone out there or people out there who wish to be granted party status. Uh, I will ask you to fill out a party status form which I have here and will get to momentarily. After we figure out the party status situation, uh, I will turn the the proceedings over to attorney Mark Thompson. Who represents the applicant this evening and Mr. Thompson will have the opportunity to present his case in chief. Essentially, he'll be attempting on behalf of the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the township's zoning ordinance. After Mr. Thompson presents his case. Other attorneys will have the opportunity to present their cases. Other parties, who are not otherwise represented by counsel, will have an opportunity to prevent uh to present their cases. Should they so choose, but realize that there's no requirement that you do so. At the close of the evidentiary portion of the hearings, whether that happens tonight or at some subsequent hearing. Uh, the board may defer the rendering of a decision for up to forty-five days. And that time period is set forth in the Pennsylvania Municipalities Plan. So the board can take up to forty-five days to render an opinion after the last hearing. Any decision of the board members will be rendered in public. Uh, and that will be obviously announced the date and the time. To the public so that everyone that's interested can attend, should they so choose. Uh, now, based on anything that I've said so far, I'd ask if there are any questions of anyone here this evening, uh, based on the procedure. Hearing none at this time, I'd like to introduce. And admit various board exhibits, namely board exhibits one through eight. For purposes of a thorough thorough record, I'd just like to breeze through what these exhibits are, B one through eight. And just so everyone's clear, I handed uh copies of those exhibits to counsel that I am at least aware of at this moment. Uh, who are representing various individuals for this conditional use hearing. Exhibit B one is the conditional use application dated March twenty-nine, twenty nineteen. Exhibit B two, proof of publication in the daily local news on June third and June tenth, twenty nineteen. Exhibit B three, notice dated April eighteenth, twenty nineteen. Sent to property owners located within one thousand feet. And a list of owners who received said notice. Exhibit B four, an affidavit of posting with photographs evidencing the posting on June sixth, twenty nineteen. Exhibit B five, township planning commission recommendation dated June tenth, twenty nineteen. Exhibit B six, applicant's thirty day continuance request dated April ninth, twenty nineteen. Exhibit B seven, correspondence dated June thirteenth, twenty nineteen. From Mark P. Thompson Esquire requesting a continuance. And lastly, exhibit B eight. Correspondence dated June nineteenth, twenty nineteen by myself to Mark Thompson. Regarding the continuation of June eighteenth proceedings to this evening. Now that that's out of the way, at this time, I'd like to invite counsel to identify themselves. And introduce the parties that they represent. I'd like to start with Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Mark Thompson on behalf of uh Susan Panos, uh, the owners of the property and the applicant's.
Thank you. Ms. Boswell?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jennings. I'm Susan Boswell, representing Jennifer Beehen, who lives at fourteen twenty-four Arden Circle, directly adjacent to the Zampano property. She lives on Panos property.
Okay.
Could you hear it? Is it on?
We we can hear you fine, but uh the live streaming has trouble.
That's on.
Okay. Susan Boswell, I represent Jennifer Beehen, B I E H N, of fourteen twenty-four Arden Circle. They she lives directly adjacent to the Zampano property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, supervisors, Mr. Jennings, Mr. Gordon, Holly Sessler of Landis and Sessler on behalf of four property owners. Um, all of whom received notice from the township of this hearing and are adjacent to the subject property. I represent Joseph and Diane, two Ns, Corvino, C O R V I N O. Greg and Diane, Jehanian, and that's J E H A N I A N. Michael and Andrea, Boeringer, B E O H R I N G E R. And Daniel and Cindy Walsh. Who are not present this evening, but I would ask your indulgence to allow them to be party status. They had a tragic family loss last evening and are not able to be here this evening.
Could you provide the Walsh's address?
Certainly. It's fourteen fifteen Bramble Lane, Westchester, PA one nine three Main Zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, first, I'd ask Mr. Thompson if there is any objection to uh Jennifer Beehen. The Corvinos, the Jennings, Boeringers, or Walshes to having party status in these proceedings.
If you don't have any objection, well, all of the requested parties are adjacent to, I think that the the one party is across the street, but.
Thank you. Uh, before we go any further, uh, I'd like to make note that supervisor Carmen Batavio is not present this evening. And uh, to the extent that he desires to participate in these proceedings uh subsequent to this evening. I ask if there's any objection to any uh of the parties as to Mr. uh Batavio's participation, should he wish to read the transcript. And participate uh in the deliberation and decision process. Mr. Thompson, do you have an objection to that?
I have no objection.
Ms. Boswell?
No objection.
Ms. Sessler?
None whatsoever.
Thank you. Next, I'd ask if there are any individuals in the room that wish to seek party status. Who are not otherwise represented by counsel. Yes, sir. Could you please approach the podium?
My name is Justin Millier. I live at fourteen fourteen Bramble Lane. I also received the notice. And I have full questions, so just make sure I ask that.
Can you spell your last name for us?
Sure. M D I L L I U R.
Mr. Thompson, do you have any objection to party status uh for Justin? Do you help me with your last name, sir?
Millier.
Millier, located at fourteen fourteen Bramble Lane.
I guess I would just ask um how far from a distance perspective. He is is prospering from ours and the Zampanos.
I received the notice. And then two thousand feet.
Mr. Millier, could you please approach and and show us where your property is located on this area?
Yes. It's right across the street from the Walshes. Right here.
Just go off the record for a moment. Okay, we'll go back on the record. Uh, there is. Mr. Millier, I'm gonna have you uh fill out a request for party status form. Um, you can simply return this to me uh once you're done filling it out. Uh, but there's been no objection uh to Mr. Millier's. Party status, so he too will be granted uh party status for purposes of the conditional use application. Is there anyone else that wishes to have party status? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. As I indicated, uh, Mr. Thompson will first, as counsel for the applicant, have the opportunity to present his case. And I invite him to begin doing so.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Um, members of the board, Chairman Emanuel. Uh, I'm sorry. Hello? My name is Mark Thompson. I represent Chris and Amy Zampano uh in this application for a home occupation. Uh, for the record, let me just say that I agree with uh the statements that your solicitor made on the record. One thing I would like to correct, we submitted two applications. Uh, one was a conditional use application dated March twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, the zoning officer then asked us to submit a home occupation application that was dated April twenty-second. So the applications are essentially the same. I think I just wanted to correct that for the record. Uh, that that the conditional, the actual conditional use application was dated March twenty-nine. Sure. That being said, uh, the provisions concerning uh the R two zoning district and. Uh, section two forty thirty-two uh J, uh governing uh home occupation uses uh in the R two zoning district, I agree with. I do have a packet of exhibits. I'd like to hand it up if that's okay.
Yes.
I'm gonna put this down. Would be okay if I sat? So that being said, we have a woodworking shop. Uh, that is the use that's permitted in the R two zoning district as an accessory use. Uh, which is permitted by conditional use as a home occupation. Uh, we have been to the planning commission twice. We've spent quite a bit of time for the planning commission. We did get a recommendation. Um, and and I usually like to go through my exhibit packets before the hearing, but. Uh, I know we're uh limited with time, uh, and I'd like to jump right into the testimony, um, specifically. Testimony concerning sound. That was an issue that. Was discussed uh at length uh before the planning commission. Uh, one of the recommendations of the planning commission was uh that we hire a sound expert, which we did. Uh, we have our sound expert. He is uh remote, uh, ready to testify, and I'd like to call him as my first witness, if that's okay with the board. Yes. Okay. I'd like to call Mr. William Thornton. Mr. Thornton, can you see the court reporter?
Yes, I I. I don't get the court reporter. Raise your hand. And there, I can see it now.
Can you just raise your right hand, sir? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give in the matter now being heard will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Uh, Mr. Thornton, could you please spell your name for the record?
Certainly. It's William Thornton. The last name is spelled T H O R N T O N.
And what is your profession, Mr. Thornton?
I'm a mechanical engineer specializing in physical acoustics, noise control, and mechanical vibrations.
Um, in the board's packet, uh, is an exhibit marked exhibit A three, uh, and that is your curriculum B tie. Um, are you familiar with that?
Yes, I am. I have a copy here.
Okay. Um. Can you first describe your education?
Sure. Uh, at the undergrad, which and then at the master's level, I uh received a bachelor's and a master's degree in mechanical engineering. Uh, both of them with concentrations in physical acoustics, noise control, mechanical vibrations. The master's was from Purdue University School of Mechanical Engineering.
Uh, is there such a thing as a professional engineer in acoustics?
No, there's none.
And can you describe your experience um in engineering acoustics, vibration, and noise control?
Sure. I I've actually grown up in the field and worked professionally since roughly two thousand and four. Uh, completed uh on the order of a pound of projects now, uh, several hundred clients across the country and abroad. Uh, working in architectural acoustics, environmental community noise and noise control. And commercial and industrial noise control.
And have you ever testified before a court, uh, before a township board of supervisors or zoning hearing board?
Yes, I testified at all of them.
And have you ever been accepted as an expert in acoustics, vibration, and noise control?
Yes, I've been uh accepted as an expert in China. I've testified.
Um, based on his CV, I request that he be uh accepted as an expert in acoustics, vibration, and noise control.
Ms. Boswell or Ms. Sessler, do either of you have questions on more dear regarding Mr. Thornton's qualifications?
Yes, sir. I just wondered, have you had experience testing woodworking operations? Mr. Thornton?
Obviously, I've never had experience testing anything as small as this. I've uh had extensive experience with large sawmills and commercial woodworking operations.
Sorry, what was the first thing that you said? You said commercial woodworking and what?
Commercial woodworking with products, uh, commercial, basically commercial industry with wood products and and wood manufacturing. As well as commercial sawmills.
Thank you. I have no objection.
Ms. Boswell, do you have any objection to the admission?
No, I have no objection.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, uh, Mr. Thornton will so be recognized as an expert. Uh, mechanical engineer in the areas of acoustics, vibration, and noise control.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Uh, Mr. Thornton, are you located remotely? Uh, you were testifying uh by, I guess we would call it Skype. Um, is that because you're you're located uh outside the Pittsburgh area?
I'm located. That's correct. I'm located outside the Pittsburgh area.
Um. And and I think counsel asked you concerning uh some of the testing that you had done uh for commercial operations, woodworking operations. Is that like a sawmill or like a commercial furniture manufacturing use?
All of the above, uh, pulp and paper mills, uh, wood processing, uh, timber processing. Wood product manufacturing and commercial sawmills.
Um, are you familiar with uh the zoning ordinance and actually the code? Um, East Goshen Township as it pertains to noise?
Yes, I am. I became acquainted with this project.
And you're aware that the zoning ordinance, which is Article two forty, as well as uh Article one five-nine uh of the East Goshen Township Code. Both regulate uh noise produced in the township?
Yes, I'm aware of that. To my aware, to my knowledge, they both seem to be parallel versions of the same program.
And are you versed in using uh sound testing devices?
Very heavily versed, yes.
Okay. Um, and you performed sound testing uh on the Zampano property, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what date uh did you perform that sound testing?
Oh, I believe the testing was performed. June twenty, uh, June twenty-five, twenty nineteen.
And that was, there wasn't anything particularly different about that day? It was just an average day?
To my to my experience, it was a very average day.
Okay.
Repentant neighborhood.
And you used a device uh to perform the the sound testing on that on the properties, is that correct?
Uh, correct. What I used is a a precision, what's called type one. There are actually. Uh, US and international standards that govern the precision, accuracy, and frequency precision of these types of devices. So I used a type one sound level meter handheld analyzer that's the highest precision range. And it was calibrated prior to and after testing and uh followed accepted standards and good practices.
And did you generate a report based on the testing done on this Zampano property?
Yes, I did.
And we have uh your report. It's dated June twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, marked as exhibit four. Uh, do you have that report in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Um. So. Let's talk about uh what you did in order to generate. So let's talk about what you did in order to generate that report. What was the first step in the process?
First step in the process was simply to take a look at the neighborhood and the area surrounding properties via Google Earth before I ever visited the property, and then to familiarize myself with the east, with the pertinent East Ocean Noise Ordinance materials.
So you, did you take sound readings?
Yes, I did. And I subsequently visited the Zomano property and performed controlled noise testing of the ambient noise environment and the proposed CZ woodworking operations noise.
Okay, so let's first talk about the ambient sound in the area of the Zomano property. Anything particular about, about that ambient noise?
No, I'd say very typical for a suburban neighborhood. Most professionals, most competent professionals can take a look at a Google Earth map, a Google Earth photograph of a neighborhood within a couple of decibels, tell you what the average daytime and nighttime ambient sound levels are. They're very consistent from one residential suburban bedroom community to another, one agricultural community to another. So measured the ambient sound levels. All of the CZ woodworking equipment was turned off, unplugged, disabled, and did a circuit around the property line, simply measuring and monitoring the existing ambient noise levels due to the community outside of the property.
On page three of your report, you have an aerial, and I'm going to apologize. The aerial, it didn't come out on the copy so well, but you can see in the middle of the aerial is the house on the property, and then there's a line that represents the driveway coming in. There's a blue dot at the end of that driveway. What does that represent?
That's roughly the geometric center of the CZ woodworking building. It did not exist when this aerial photograph was taken. So that's roughly where the center of the building is located.
And what are the pink dots?
They are the approximate monitoring locations that the property line is located, east, south, and west of the CZ woodworking building.
Okay, and so why don't you explain to the board how, well, let's stop. You first measured the ambient sound in the environment at those points, is that correct?
That's correct. Measured and monitored them for several minutes at least at each point.
Is that how the device works? It's not necessarily something that happens immediately, it's something that takes readings over time?
Well, I, based on standards and standard methodology for this type of measurements, rather than take a spot measurement and possibly gather, you may get a high measurement, you may get a low measurement. We monitor for a period of time during which we record the minimum measurements, the maximum measurements, and the running average measurements. So we don't want, just want to take our, one arbitrary snapshot in time. We want to have a better statistical picture of the noise.
And did you do that at these locations on the aerial that are shown, the three pink dots?
Yes, I did.
Okay, but let's just talk about the dots. There's one that's, I guess, at the bottom, on the left-hand side. Is that directly behind the garage building?
Yes, it's directly, basically perpendicular to the center line of garage building. It's like a back opposite of the garage doors. So that's the point on the property line, the western property line closest to the center of the CZ woodworking building.
Okay, and that was on the property line, correct?
That's correct.
And the pink dot that's to the right-hand side, and that looks like it's to the right, or if you're looking at the building, I guess, to the left, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that was the second location that you took readings?
Correct, that was the southern, nearest southern property line.
And that was on the property line?
Correct.
And then the pink dot that looks like it's in the middle of the aerial, towards the house, is that the third location that you took readings?
Yes, that's the eastern property line, basically, a direct line between the CZ woodworking building and the residence on that property.
Okay, did you choose those locations based on the sections in the ordinance governing the ability to hear sound at the property line?
I chose based on the ordinance and directive, but also to capture the loudest sound at these property line locations. In other words, to be conservative and measure the maximum noise level that would be generated at the property lines.
Is that the maximum possible, in your opinion, noise level that you could measure?
It's the maximum possible due to the CZ woodworking equipment, yes. If I've measured other place on the property lines, I may have measured higher ambient levels.
But let's talk about that. You didn't take any readings, let's say, on Artley Circle near the driveway of the Zomano property. Why is that?
It was actually fairly loud on Artley Circle that day. There was a trash pickup going on, and the ambient noise out on the road on Artley Circle was artificially relatively high that day.
Let's talk about the testing of the equipment. You have the equipment listed on page five of the report, and you have seven individual machines that you noted in the report. Were those machines running during your testing?
The way we ran the machines is I had Mr. Zomano enlist several helpers, and our goal was to run the woodworking equipment to make it artificially high. Again, we wanted to get the maximum sound that this equipment could possibly make. We weren't trying to get a contrived case, we wanted an artificially high case. So with Mr. Zomano's helper, we ran so many pieces of equipment at once. We ran two dust collection systems that were always on during the woodworking equipment testing, and then we measured multiple combinations of those two dust collection systems along with other woodworking equipment simultaneously. So the way sound works is if each device produces sound on its own, when they're turned on together, the sound is additive and the levels go up. So we measured things running simultaneously to create the loudest sound possible.
And did you take those sound readings with the one door and the windows open?
We did. Again, the goal was to create the maximum sound level that could be achieved with this equipment at the property line. We wanted essentially a worst-case scenario. So we had the windows and doors open to allow the maximum amount of acoustical energy out of the buildings or propagate to the property lines.
So before I talk about the measurements that you took with the doors and windows open, did you take measurements with the doors and windows closed?
We did.
And what were the results? Why is that not reported in the report?
In several locations, several property line locations, when the doors and windows were closed, the woodworking equipment was not audible or measurable. The background noise was louder than the woodworking equipment, which I couldn't take a valid reading.
So the ambient noise was actually higher than the woodworking equipment?
Well, the ambient noise was frequently louder than the woodworking equipment even when the doors and windows opened. But when the doors and windows closed, the ambient noise was absolutely louder than the woodworking equipment.
And just so that we're clear, when we talk about ambient noise, this is the type of noise that's to be expected in a suburban neighborhood, correct?
Correct. It's basically the aggregate of vehicles traveling down the residential roads, children playing, dogs barking, birds chirping, the wind blowing in the trees, leaf blowers, lawn mowers, go on, go forth, children playing. Just the aggregate, normal suburban activities.
Okay, and you had mentioned that there was a garbage truck on Artley Circle that day. Other than that, though, there wasn't anything that was particularly different in the ambient noise than any other day that you would anticipate testing, was there?
No, having tested, oh, at this point, literally hundreds of suburban neighborhoods, it was very typical. We actually paused our testing during the time when the garbage truck was on Artley Circle because it was so loud, it was drowning out the other sound.
Okay, well, let's talk about the results. There is, I guess it's a graph on page six, a table. Why don't you take us through what the results of the testing revealed?
Sure. Okay, so as we discussed, I measured both the ambient and the operational noise levels at the east, south, and west property boundaries. And then what's reported in Table 1 in the second column are the ambient bound level, minimum levels, and maximum levels during the monitoring period at each one of those points. And then what we did is turned on the woodworking equipment, opened the doors and windows, and I repeated the measurements at each of those three property line locations, and I recorded the maximum operational noise level that was measured during the monitoring period.
So on the right-hand side, when it says operational maximum, is that with the woodworking equipment running?
That is with all of the woodworking equipment running and the ambient noise added to it. With the doors and windows open.
Let me, let me understand the ambient min-max, and that's the first, the first readings. Explain to me what those two readings represent.
So the way the sound level meter is set up, it's taking a running average, it's continuously measuring and storing data and over some arbitrarily long period of time. And then what I'm able to produce out of that is the lowest sound pressure level that's measured during that monitoring period, the minimum, and the maximum sound pressure level is measured during that monitoring period, the maximum. So the number on the left, the lower of the two numbers, is the minimum, and the number on the right of the hash mark, the larger of the two, is the maximum, measured at each of those points.
So for the first point, you're labeling a measurement, measurement location, it's east. Is that directly behind the woodworking or the garage structure?
In the picture we looked at earlier, it's towards the top of the picture. It's, it's the one located furthest from the garage.
My mistake, it's the furthest from the garage, okay. And so what were the ambient levels that you measured?
During the ambient measurements, the sound level ranged between roughly 43 dB and 52 dB.
And then you took the operational maximum, which was with these machines running, correct? And what was that measurement?
The measure, what I measured at that point, the operating woodworking, the operational noise was less than or equal to 50.9 dB. I said less than or equal to because we can't control the ambient noise. I can't turn all of the sounds off. They're constantly happening in the background, and they add to the overall sound level. So I'm not just measuring the woodworking equipment. I'm measuring the summation of the woodworking equipment plus the ambient noise. So the actual woodworking noise is less than or equal to 50.9 dB.
So the ambient noise of 52.3 at some point was more than the woodworking, with the woodworking equipment actually running?
That's correct.
And when you have the ambient that's within a range of what you're trying to test, does that increase the actual number that you're trying to measure?
It does. When we're trying to measure a specific noise source, in this case, the CZ woodworking equipment, the ambient noise has to be at least 10 dB below the thing we're trying to test for it not to contaminate. If the ambient noise is less than 10 decibels below the noise we're trying to test, it actually adds to it and artificially increases the measured levels.
So was the ambient less than or greater than?
The ambient was within five decibels of the CZ working, I'm sorry, within 10 decibels of the CZ woodworking equipment. So it actually added to the overall measurement and contaminate, make it a better, if you will.
So the 50.9 is actually greater than if the ambient noise were lower?
Yes, yes, sir. So if we could turn on all the ambient noise, the woodworking equipment would have come in at a slightly lower number.
Okay, let's talk about the south measurement location. Is that the one that's to the, at the very bottom of the picture?
In the picture, it's towards, it's towards the, hold on.
I'm getting them all wrong.
It's 60 below the garage, I think the bottom of the picture, in the center.
Okay, that is right. That's on the property line directly to the left of the garage then, when you're looking at it?
That's right.
Okay. And so what were the measurements at that location?
So the same procedure. The ambient sound levels ranged between roughly 46 dB and 53 dB, and the operational noise levels were less than or equal to 50.2 dB.
And how about the west location? This would be the location that's directly behind the garage?
Again, the same procedure. The ambient levels ranged from roughly 46 to 62 dB, and the operational woodworking equipment was less than or equal to 53 dB.
Now, at these locations, could you actually, let me strike that, let me rephrase the question. Was the woodworking equipment audible to the ear?
At the eastern location, the woodworking equipment was not audible to the ear. At the south and west boundaries, it was audible, which is basically to say you can pick it up. Our ears are very good at picking up sound in a noisy background. The way we're able to have conversations in a noisy room or a noisy restaurant.
Was the sound that was audible consistent with the types of sounds that you were hearing in the residential area?
So both from a subjective standpoint, in other words, listening to the pitch that the woodworking equipment produced and the loudness, and from an objective standpoint, so a measured standpoint, the level and the frequency content, the woodworking equipment was quite consistent with existing ambient neighborhood noise.
And again, that was the noise of air conditioners and other things like kids on swing sets and lawn mowers and things of that nature?
And overhead, hardy aircraft, and distant cars, and, yeah.
And so what's the, what's the sound that's not consistent with the residential neighborhood, in your opinion?
So basically, I would say, and this is somewhat subjective, but I would say that it's it's sound that has pitches and tones to it that aren't consistent with what you might hear in a normal residential neighborhood or loudness. So the measured sound pressure level is significantly above what might be a normally occurring in a residential neighborhood.
But what's an example of something you've measured which wouldn't necessarily be a residential sound or something that you wouldn't, in your opinion, agree was consistent with sounds you would hear in a residential neighborhood? Would that be like a drill rig?
Can you say that again, please?
I'm sorry, would that be like a drill rig?
I would say a good example that many Pennsylvanians are probably aware of at this point are oil and gas drilling equipment, heavy industry, commercial operations, chlorine operations, mining operations, industrial production facilities, things of that nature.
You've taken sound readings of those types of uses, have you?
Yes, I have.
And in your opinion, they're very different than the sound readings you took at the Zomano property?
Yes, correct. I mean, bearing in mind a lot of my professional experience, we're actually working with people or on behalf of the community to control those industrial noise sources and make them quieter so they don't create noise nuisances. Yes, but it's a better, better, essentially.
The zoning officer took readings. Are you aware of the readings that the zoning officer took on the property?
I'm aware of the measurements and the rough range of the readings, yes.
And those readings were, were higher than the readings you took? Why, how did that happen, in your opinion?
I think there's two fundamental reasons. First and foremost is the type, the precision and accuracy of the measurement equipment. They're actually anti, the American National Standards Institute, what is referenced throughout the East Ocean's ordinances, they're actually standards for the precision, accuracy, and performance of a sound level meter. So a lot of the equipment would not have met those standards. The second reason is that, as I said before, when there is ambient noise, the ambient noise contaminates the measurement you're trying to take. So on days where the birds are chirping or the wind is blowing a little bit, particularly if there's on a windscreen, or in a backfield windscreen on the measurement system, all of those things will contract, contaminate the readings, cause them to be biased artificially higher than they really should be.
So you had a windscreen on your device?
Yes, actually, a standard, it's a windscreen that meets a very specific standard to a 10 weight, up to 10. to a ten to eight, up to 10 meters per second of wind.
Is that the ASTM standard?
Uh, for, for the windscreen, it's actually ASTM and anti-standers, as well as international ISO standards. They're, they're harmonized, as we call them, they're all in agreement.
I'm going to ask you a question about the dissipation of sound over distance. Could you explain, uh, how that works from a scientific perspective?
Sure. So, basically, uh, when we have a building like the CZ woodworking shop, we, we would call that a, a point source. In other words, most of the energy is concentrated within that building. So, as we walk 20, 50, or 100 feet away, all of the energy is in one point space, roughly. And sound, so basically, sound is a pressure field. It's literally pressure waves propagating out from a noise source, regardless of what the noise source is. When we have sound from a, a nominally a point source spreading in the environment, what happens is the sound dissipates by 6 dB A, so six decibels reduction every time we double the distance from the center of the noise source. So, if I was to measure 20 feet from the center of that building, and I arbitrarily, let's say I got 50 dB A. If I was meant to go 40 feet away from the center of the building, I would measure 44 dB A, 6 dB less. If I again doubled that distance, I went from 40 to 80, there'll be another 6 dB drop, and so on and so forth. Every time we double the distance from the noise source, because of geometric spreading, the sound level drops off at a highly predictable rate of 6 dB per doubling of distance.
And that is why the readings are less as you move further away from the garage, is that correct?
That's correct.
East Ocean Zoning Ordinance talks about pure tones. Were you able to determine whether the, the sound of the machines was a pure tone?
Yes, it was. So, East Ocean spells out very specifically in the ordinance a methodology for evaluating whether a sound is a pure tone or not. Uh, if you look at page 7 of the report, I believe it's figure 3, uh, what's actually done, what, what the ordinance prescribes is that we measure the, not just the overall level of the noise, but what's called the spectrum of the noise. It's like a fingerprint of the noise. How much energy is at each frequency? And the ordinance prescribes a calculation procedure to take that spectrum, go through a procedure, and compare it to a limit. And I, I, I went through that procedure. I compared the woodworking noise to the East Ocean limit. Uh, the woodworking noise was well below, uh, the allowable limit prescribed by East Ocean. Uh, therefore, according to the ordinance, it is not a total noise source.
So, it's not a pure tone?
It is not a total noise source, that's right.
Um, is there anything that Mr. Zepano has done, uh, in his garage structure that specifically mitigates, uh, any of the sounds from his equipments?
Uh, Mr. Zepano, this actually was done prior to my involvement, uh, took the steps of using a fairly heavy wall construction. So, basically, the wall of his garage has significant mass due to the construction materials, so that has what we call high transmission loss. In other words, it stops sound from propagating through the walls. And he still is taking the step to place a crucical absorption material within the garage to, to dissipate the sound field in the building, enhance the sound field that propagated down into the neighborhood.
And so, even with the doors and windows open, uh, those characteristics of the garage actually mitigate the sound of the machines, is that correct?
They do. Uh, with doors and windows open, the mitigation is less because we have openings in the building. But with doors and windows closed, of course, they're, they're much more effective.
Um, you have, uh, conclusions in the report on page 2. If you, you have three bullet points. If you could just, uh, explain each of those conclusions?
So, the first, uh, East Ocean Township, um, is progressive enough. Many communities do not have this, that they've, they've used an objective numerical limit, an objective numerical standard. Very similar to a, a weight rating on a bridge or a speed limit on the road. We all know what the rules are. They published a noise limit in their ordinance and said, "Oh, okay, the noise must be less than 60 dB A during the daytime as it crosses inches, crosses that residential boundary line." Uh, all of the measured noise due to the CZ woodworking equipment is well below 60. In fact, it's typically on the order of 50 to 50 dB. So, the, the CZ woodworking noise, no matter how it's interpreted, is well below the permissible daytime noise limits. Uh, the second bullet point, uh, basically, is that both in the sound level and the frequency content, the CZ woodworking sound is consistent with noises that are already naturally occurring ambient noise in the neighborhood. And the third bullet point is really a reinforcement of that point that, uh, basically, the CZ woodworking equipment is consistent with pre-existing ambient noises that occur on a daily basis in a community such as that, and specifically in that community.
I don't have any further questions from Mr. Thornton. Thank you, Mr. Thornton.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thornton, there may be questions from other parties and other attorneys representing other parties. So, I'd ask either Ms. Boswell or Ms. Setzler at this time, uh, if you'd care to cross-examine Mr. Thornton.
I would, thank you. Mr. Thornton, good evening.
Good evening, already over.
Well, thank you. When you measured these saws, um, were all of the listed saws being operated? How did you know which was operating at what time?
So, to make things simple, uh, Mr. Zepano recruited several assistants. Uh, as I said, so the, the two air filtration systems were running all the time, and the assistants were going through various combinations of, of saws, pliers, jointers, um, uh, routers. And I was just simply keeping track of the maximum sound level ever produced, rather than what the sound level due to a certain combination was, measuring the loudest that was ever produced, whatever the combination may have been.
Okay, so if I understand it correctly, um, Mr. Zepano and his workers were operating machinery, but to your knowledge, was there any wood being fed through the machines?
Yes, that was actually, we were going through a random assortment of both sawn woods and hardwoods to capture all the variables.
And did you record what was being fed through at which time for each of the readings you were taking at that time?
No, because again, I was, I was taking a running average and recording the maximum level ever produced, regardless of what the specific combination that produced it was.
And do you have any way of knowing whether each and every machine was operated other than by Mr. Zepano's representation here?
Uh, except for at two, at least two locations, I was actually able to see what was going on in the building as I measured. So, yes, I was watching the, the assistants cycle through the equipment.
Was there a pattern to the cycling of the equipment for each location?
I, I believe they had some pattern. I didn't take note of it, no, though.
You mentioned that you had, um, although you have a Type 1 meter, you handheld it for these purposes?
It was handheld at the height of approximately 5 and 1/2 feet off the ground plane.
And is there some reason you did not utilize a tripod?
Uh, for an environmental noise measurement, you'll find that it doesn't make any noticeable, appreciable, or measurable difference in the result. Uh, it, it wanted to use correct form, the equipment is held away from the body, and it's consistent with each, uh, the difference between that and a tripod makes no measurable difference.
You mentioned that it was a rather typical weather day. Um, that confuses me this year because a typical weather day seems to be rainy and very humid. So, if you can articulate a little bit what the weather was like with a little more precision, I appreciate it.
I, I will, I actually have notes of it, but I believe it was in the mid-'80s with light variable wind, fairly high humidity. Uh, at, at distances such as these, temperature and humidity have no measurable effect on the sound level of the propagation. You have to go to much, much larger distances before they become a factor.
And you just mentioned that you have notes. The raw data that you accumulated is that, I, I noted is not part of your report. Do you have that information available elsewhere?
Uh, the, the way the equipment works, it's basically stored in a, in a running data file. Not only is the, does the equipment measure the metrics I want to collect, but literally hundreds others simultaneously. So, they're stored in an electronic proprietary format. Yes, but the data that exists can't be shared.
And would you be willing to share that information with an expert engaged by the, by the parties in this proceeding?
Certainly.
Does the time of day matter at all in terms of the sound refraction in your readings?
No, it, it honestly, uh, you use the term "sound refraction." A phenomenon like that can occur, again, over larger distances, uh, that, that may vary with time of day. But these, I, I consider very short distances now. Uh, time of day and refraction phenomena like that do not play any kind of measurable role in the report.
And when you were measuring the equipment operating, um, how long of a period of time did you measure each piece of equipment or each cycle, if I think of the term, maybe?
I would say on average, I was probably at each measurement location, um, on, on the order of 3 to 5 minutes. There were times we repeated again because the ambient noise was higher. Uh, we actually repeated measurements because we couldn't even hear the equipment running, we weren't sure it was running in time, so we had to confirm that it was actually on.
And when your equipment is, as I think you testified, registering low frequencies and high frequencies, and it averages them out for your purposes, is that a correct statement?
I think, well, not frequencies, no. It's actually measuring level. I, I am measuring frequency, but if I understand your question, I think what you meant was measuring levels, so the sound pressure level. I'm measuring the highs and the lows and recording them, though I'm not averaging them. There is, it is possible to average them, though.
Your equipment does not do that automatically when it gives the readings?
It does, but I, I chose to record the highest readings for the woodworking equipment, again, to, uh, in trying to protect the neighbors, uh, measure the loudest possible case, not some... If I were to take an average, the woodworking equipment levels would have actually registered lower. Instead, I measured the loudest levels produced by the woodworking equipment, trying to be conservative.
Okay, and, and am I correct, when we're talking about pure tones, that oftentimes the more contributing noise, um, can disguise or hide a pure tone characteristic? In other words, if one of those particular pieces of equipment would in and of itself be a pure tone, running several of them at the same time would, would mask that effect?
No, that's not accurate at all. Um, the whole reason, so the noise ordinance spells out a, for, an approach, a methodology to measure and evaluate for pure tones. Uh, so what I did was took a spectral measurement of a third octave band measurement. Uh, if there are pure tones of measurement, they're still captured in that spectral measurement. Running multiple piece of equipment does not mask pure tones, it, it may add to them, actually. But what is, what, I don't, actually, I have to add to that answer. I mean, this is not even marginal, be, again, there's a standard in the ordinance for what constitutes a pure tone. This equipment was not even close to that standard. It was clearly well below the allowable limits to be a pure tone.
I don't think I have anything further at this point. I'd like to ask a few questions as well. Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Just to, to clarify and confirm, you did not do any testing within the boundaries of the receiving properties? You just, your testing was at the boundary of the property line, but was not across the boundary into the receiving property, is that correct?
No, I mean, basically, I know I did not trespass onto the neighboring properties. I didn't have permission to. And again, there's very clear basic science to establish that sound, the sound pressure level from a source that exists will dissipate with distance, so... But there's a, the sound level will be lower as we travel onto the adjacent properties.
Is that, is that true even if the adjacent properties are at higher elevations than the subject property?
Yeah, yes. I mean, the elevation difference is on the order of tens of feet. Uh, if we had a clip, if we had a thousand-foot clip at the property line, then there'd be a significant impact, but we're talking about tens of feet of elevation change uh, between the noise source and the property lines and on the receiving, adjacent properties. So, the elevation does not play a measurable role here.
Could you tell me what time of day you did the testing? Um, you don't, from between what hour to what hour?
I actually have to check the date and timestamps, but from my memory, it was roughly, uh, 1 o'clock to 2 o'clock timeframe.
Is it possible it was between noon and 1 o'clock?
It, it is possible.
You mentioned that... The loca, you told us the locations of each sound level measurement. Do you have photographs of how everything was set up at that time? Or you, I, I see you have the site plan, and you showed us where, where you took them, but do you have some kind of other data as to how the equipment was set up at that time and how your equipment was set up? In other words, how did you...
No, I, I was actually working solo that day, so just to unify, I fundamentally couldn't take pictures of myself. So, no, I don't have pictures of my actual work. I think Mr. Zepano made a photograph, but some of it, I'm not sure.
Um, and again, you are not 100% certain what exactly was running inside the garage at the times you were measuring, or there's which pieces of equipment? I think you said that both air, air handlers or air purification systems, whatever, they, they were running all the time, but that at, at different measuring points, there were different machines running, is that accurate?
That's correct.
And you don't, do you have a record as to what was actually being fed through those equipment? Pieces of equipment at that time, was it hardwood, softwood? I mean, do you know specifics as to each measurement you took, what precisely you were measuring at that point?
Well, again, so I was meditating your running measurement, recording the maximum level, so regardless of what caused the maximum level, it was some combination of equipment. So, I do not, there were many times where the woodworking equipment was quieter than those maximum levels due to some other combination, some other wood, but no, I do not have that recorded.
But is it not possible there could have been higher levels if, if different woods had been being run through the equipment or different equipment being run at any given measurement? You said, you said, you're telling us...
We, we ran all the combinations and all the combinations of wood, so we captured all the, all the permutations.
But you don't have backup to show exactly what those permutations were?
No.
You mentioned that your meters had been calibrated before use. Was there a certification of calibration for each meter as required, like within the last month or two, whatever the requirement is?
There actually is no specific requirement, but good practice is to require, have a traceable calibration on an annual basis, and then to use calibrated calibrators to field check calibration before and after each measurement. Uh, from memory, I believe these, this meter was calibrated in January of this year, and then field calibration checked at the start of the measurement and at completion of the measurement.
Okay, and you have logs showing that, logs of how you did the calibration and when you did it during the testing?
It's stored in the data files.
Which you're willing to share with us, correct?
Correct, correct. And it's worth noting, uh, that typically, equipment like this, modern equipment, because of the microphone design, uh, it typically, and this equipment holds true to that, it's, it's rare that you see fluctuations on the order of even several tenths of a decibel over multiple years. This equipment follows that trend and basically... This equipment follows that trend and basically the calibration sensitivities are stable throughout the equipment's lifespan.
And I'm sorry if I missed this. Does your report reflect the make and model of each meter that you used?
It does reflect, shows the make and model. There was only one meter used and we moved between measurement locations. Again, I was operating solo, so I was actually moving through a measurement cycle.
Did you use ascetic levels when you were, what metrics did you use?
I used the metrics spelled out in the ordinance, a slow response, a weighted maximum sound pressure level.
And just so I'm clear, ambient is the same thing as background noise, correct?
Ambient and background are the same thing, yes.
Thank you. I just have a few more questions. First of all, you mentioned the construction of the garage and you mentioned pardon me, I'm trying to write my notes. Could you just be a little more specific as to what type of construction you felt mitigates the sound? Number one, and then number two, are there additional measures that could be taken to further mitigate the sound?
So we can quantify the ability of a building or a construction element to stop sound in terms of like a transmission loss. How much, as the sound propagates through the structure, transmits through the structure, how much loss is experienced? It turns out that these performance quantities are very well documented. Basically, a long story short, the heavier, the more mass there is to the building wall construction, the more transmission loss.
And you mentioned this was a heavy mass, and we can be specific, what does that mean? I don't know what that means.
Heavy drywall, two-by-four stud construction, battencavities, and the skin of the building is actually a fairly high-mass, identity construction material. So literally, just the mass, if you were to take a cross section through the wall, how much mass does it have? The more mass, in general terms, the more ability to stop sound from propagating through the wall.
You also said acoustical absorption material had been used. Could you clarify what that means?
Sure. When you're inside a room, for example, the meeting room that you all are in right now, if you look up above you, there's acoustical ceiling tile. It's literally just a material to dissipate acoustical energy within a space. If you ever been in a gymnasium that was loud and echoing, you couldn't hear anything intelligibly, you can add, the gold standard is typically fiberglass or some type of acoustical absorption material to break down that sound field within the space. And then in a building such as that, as you break down the sound field inside the building, absorb it, it's simply less energy to propagate out of the building.
And so what specifically did you see in this building?
Acoustical absorption treatments around the windows and doors on the walls. And for that matter, I believe it is also fiberglass batting exposed on the ceiling, which is acoustical absorption as well.
And the second part of my question had been, are there further measures that could be taken to even further mitigate the sound loss or sound transmission?
Frankly, not something we've looked at exactly, because at the bottom line, the noise ordinance provides an objective limit. We measured compared to that effective limit. The sound of the CZ woodworking equipment was well below that allowable objective limit. So there's no reason to make the client incur the cost of going through hypotheticals when it already meets the effective limit.
Did you do any measurement of vibration on this equipment as it was being tested?
To measure vibration, you have to measure at some receiver location. If I were to, no, I did not measure vibration.
You mentioned that you look at Google Maps to determine the ambient. I mean, what did you do with Google Maps? The reason I'm asking is because there are some Google Maps out there that are really not current and a lot of foliage has been taken out from what some of these Google Maps show.
I'm glad you mentioned foliage, actually. So as a preface to your question, foliage, and this is well documented in our scientific literature, foliage, trees, greenscreens, do not have any significant measurable impact on noise propagation, especially at short distances like these. So trees and foliage have no impact at these distances. So I did look at Google Maps, just trying to get the lay of the land. I wanted to find out if we had a commercial airport next door or a landfill or what the case may be. I didn't rely on Google Maps to calculate any numbers. I just wanted to familiarize myself with the neighborhood that I've been working in before I got there.
And your chart indicates less than, your chart on page? I think what you mean is less than or equal to perhaps.
It might have been less than, but it could have been worse case equal too. But no, I believe it's less than.
And this is just for my education, I guess, but when you're measuring, you have one meter, you said, and that meter is measuring ambient sound and the sound made by the equipment being operated, right?
Well, we went through multiple passes. Again, first, we shut off all the equipment, untrucked things. All the CZ woodworking equipment was inoperative. I went through the measurement locations and measured and recorded the ambient sound. We then went back, ran through the woodworking equipment, different woods, and by default, you're measuring the summation of the ambient and the woodworking noise. Even if you took multiple different meters, you can't discriminate the two. It's a pressure field, it's additive. By definition, you're measuring the summation of not just the signal under test, but any ambient environmental noise that's also going on. And a reminder that the net effect is to create a higher level.
My question is, how do you know then? Your chart says as relatively high ambient levels and relatively low operational maximums as compare, how do you know which was ambient versus which was? I guess that's my question. How do you know when you're measuring a sound and you get, say you get 50 decibels? How do you know which of that is ambient and which of that is from the machinery?
Well, I think the simple answer is you don't. Again, it's 50 decibels in that example, and we have a fluctuating ambient and the machinery. That's why I say that the machinery is less than that number. That's a maximum it allows it could be. So the point is that there's no way for the machinery to be louder than that. The ambient adds to it and increases the level.
Thank you.
Mr. Millier, you are party to these proceedings and you have the same rights, counsel, before you to ask questions of this specific witness. I would just remind you, no opinions at this time, just questions for the witness.
Okay. Thank you. My first question is, you mentioned at the beginning of your special testimony that you tested this, was it all night? You got an ambient sound that was all day and all night? That's what you mentioned. Set the case?
No, that's not the case.
So you don't know what are typical of this for the entire day of the 24-hour span? You only were there, how many spots? I did not, I did not receive any of the packets. So how many spots did you test of the property?
Three property line locations.
So you were there for 15 minutes? Did you say 15 minutes?
About an hour and a half, I believe.
Was every piece of equipment in the entire shop used during the tests? Because during the planning commission, Chris mentioned that he didn't have a planer and now he does. And my background is I had a woodshop growing up and seen the ladder tools. Then I mentioned it was a planer, a shaper, and wasn't sure if there were other tools that could have been tested that were used.
No, I don't believe there were any other tools that were not tested. Everything in the shop was tested.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Before I open it up to questions for members of the board, I just have one clarifying question myself, if I may. Mr. Thornton, you testified that temperature and humidity wouldn't affect the sound readings, but you did mention the wind conditions that day. And I'm just wondering if you took note of the wind? If it was that of a typical summer afternoon? And secondly, would the wind potentially affect the sound readings that you took?
No, and the reading is at the first, that the actual weather conditions during testing relate variable. The biggest reason we have to consider the wind in a, in a, in a noise measurement such as this is that the wind has the possibility to blow over the windscreen, blow over the microphone, and create what's essentially damp noise, so artificially high noise. So the primary reason for considering the wind is that it doesn't cause damp noise measurements. As far as does the wind velocity and direction affect the sound of what the property line locations? The effect would be much smaller than a decibel typically. The reason is simply, sound propagates at roughly 1,000 feet per second, very roughly. So the sound is traveling much, much faster than the wind. So even if the wind is blowing away from or towards the sound source, the sound propagates much faster. The wind has a fairly small effect, especially in a light variable day.
Thank you. I'm now going to open it up to members of the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Lynch?
I have some questions. Mr. Thornton, how are you?
Good, how are you tonight?
Good, Mike Lynch, nice to see you and hear from you tonight.
Good to see you.
Mr. Thornton, are you aware of any studies that have been done that examine and/or assess the effect that continuous periods of low-level sound, for example, mechanical sound, over extended periods of time, days, weeks, months, have on the human health condition? And I'm talking about levels that are below the enforceable limits that we're discussing tonight.
I am familiar with studies along those lines. The reason is that this is an issue I have to look at. Not a project like this, but other industrial noise sources, environmental noise issues that I've had. Can be on transportation noise, a big issue where those kind of concepts come into play. The simple answer is that the state of the science is a very much contested gray area. There is no consensus science to definitively show cause and effect and show what the relationship between various noise levels and frequencies is and health effects. It is obviously an area of science being heavily researched, but there is no clear consensus opinion yet.
Thank you. As you may be familiar, in the ordinance at hand for the subject application, there is a reference that talks about noise that is detectable to normal senses beyond the property line in excess of levels customarily generated by residential use. Can you comment on that as an acoustic engineering professional or a mechanical engineer with acoustic expertise as to these detectable sounds, noise, to the normal senses? And it's either effect or relationship to any studies that you do or any inquiries that have been made to you over time on matters of this nature that essentially are below enforceable ordained decibel levels?
I would say, that's obviously a fairly complex question. To try to give a relatively simple, concise answer, the people's annoyance, people's disturbance, people's disruption tends to be controlled by the highest levels, the highest sound levels they experience. So to have sound that may be lower than the ambient noise but audible, to my knowledge, there's no science to show that that's had any deleterious effect on people's health and happiness. The way that's written, the way the ordinance is written, what you're referring to, you know, part of it is, is is the sound detectable in excess of what might normally occur in a residential noise, community noise. And to that point, the ambient sound measured even at the property line was routinely louder, more frequency content. Some of the background noise was highly tunneled, things like leaf blowers. So the woodworking sound, even to the extent it may be audible beyond the property lines, is well below existing commonly occurring ambient noise.
Okay. What I'm trying to get is that these low-level, I will use a layman's term, the droning effect of hearing that type of noise for extended periods of time, not just during an immediate period of minutes, but over extended periods of time of days, weeks, months, and years. That is something that I'm interested to understand more about. And I hear what you're saying about your not being particularly familiar or potentially there being mixed opinions or assessments of that type of sound effect on individuals. But that's what I'm trying to get at.
Within your question, you do make a good point, however, and that is, some of the science that has potentially shown connections between that type of sound and disruption of people's life cycles is exactly that. It's sound that occurs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. It never goes away day or night. It's staying, stayed constant. It does happen for very long extended periods of time, which is not the type of sound produced by woodworking operations, certainly not, you know. This is, the sound that is produced by this type of equipment is intermittent, only occurs when work is occurring and is not 24, seven, you know, it's not 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So there's a bit of a disconnect between this type of noise and the studies to the extent they exist.
Okay. I wonder if, Mr. Thornton, if you had a chance to view and listen to the series of YouTube videos that were recorded by one of the contiguous property owners?
No, I'm not aware of YouTube videos. I certainly have not seen them or heard them.
Okay. I might not be, I might like to come back to you if this hearing is continued to another day and ask you, if that's the case, to listen to those videos. We can provide the source for them. And get your thoughts about those, if you listen to them. I think there are six or seven, typically duration of a minute to two or three minutes. And I'd appreciate the opportunity to hear your perspective on those if we have a chance to chat again.
Okay.
We talked a little bit, you mentioned a little bit about sound deadening mitigation. Are you aware or familiar with sound deadening and mitigation to a building that could substantially eliminate or eliminate, substantially mitigate this low-grade mechanical noise that I've been referring to? Uh, and, and, and as I've, I've listened to in these various YouTube videos, are there ways to mitigate that through sound deadening that could be affected to the subject structure?
Absolutely. Uh, first, let me, let me clarify terms here. Sound deadening is not a technical term that we're presenting in our field. So there, there's an area that we work in extensively called architectural acoustics that would fall under. It's basically how does one design a building, a structure, an enclosure to control noise emission out of that structure? So it's a very well-developed science. Once one knows the sound level that one is trying to control, the target you're trying to meet, it's very straightforward to build or to augment a building to improve the transmission loss and control the sound emission. Yes, it's a mature science.
Okay. Could you comment on the location of the mechanical equipment in a structure and its effect, um, on the sound decibel level? And its placement and location as a mitigating aspect for sound in the way it's placed within the interior of a structure?
Uh, well, let's be specific. So this specific structure of this size, that the placement of the equipment within the structure, particularly compared to the distance between the structure and the property lines, the placement of the equipment within that structure will have no measurable impact on the sound levels of property lines. If the building were very, very large, on the order of a football field or some of that large commercial structures, then that may have an impact, but in this case, there is no impact, no effect.
I wonder if you might, and this will be difficult for you to comment upon. Of course, I, uh, like many of us these years, uh, our magic boxes and places like Google provide lots of information. Some of it, uh, not so great, some of it very interesting, provocative, and other information very valuable. I looked up some information on noise levels, uh, in shops, in woodshops. And I'm looking at some of the equipment, uh, such as a circular saw, a band saw, for instance, at 92 decibels, a dust collector from a shop area at 75 decibels, circular saw at 106 decibels, a miter saw at 103 decibels. Mr. Thornton, would you comment on, on that? Uh, uh, obviously you don't see what I have in front of me, uh, as I've looked at some of these sources. As to the, those levels, obviously you've measured externally, but, um, I, and, and I don't know the relationships of these sound pressures and, and the, 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 the decibel technology, if you will. But when I see numbers of that nature, uh, I don't know here in this, these particular printouts that I've done whether the decibel meter was literally right next to the piece of equipment or whether it was six feet away or 60 feet away. But the level certainly seems substantial. And, uh, and that's not discount the expertise that you put in with your study. It's just that I look at some of these numbers and think, um, if, if nothing else, to the operator unprotected, uh, tonight is another, uh, health effect certainly could impact when I hear those kind of, uh, read those kind of, uh, substantial sound, uh, levels.
Uh, so unquestionably, from, from what it's worth, uh, the sound, the equipment in the woodworking building is on par with those sound levels. In other words, the operator of any of those pieces of equipment is experiencing sound levels on those, on those orders of magnitude. Those are pretty typical for woodworking equipment, to me, I should say, a lot of industrial equipment. Uh, so I would say that the CZ woodworking equipment is probably very similar in level at the operator's ear. But again, uh, sound drops off with distance in a very predictable way. So despite the fact that to be close to the noise source, you do have levels on those orders of magnitude. Again, distance works in our favor. We get geometric spread. Sounds don't just travel like a ray of light. It's spread out hemispherically over the ground.
That's true.
So geometry, the surface area over which the wavefront extends decreases the level of distance. So, again, the main point, the woodworking equipment probably is very consistent with those levels you're citing at the operator's ear.
I have no other questions. Thanks, Mr. Thornton.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Jennings, that raised, a few questions raised. Another question, if I might?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Thornton?
Actually, is it, does it go back to me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I don't know if we just get
No, that's fine.
A recross examination?
My preference would be redirect followed by recross to the limited extent based on the follow-up questions following all of your initial questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. One of the questions, uh, Mr. Thornton, concerned the height of, uh, a house or a structure that would be, uh, able to hear, uh, sound emanating from, from these machines. And it had been described, uh, the neighborhood had been described as an amphitheater. When you were on the property, was that an accurate description as to how sound could be conveyed in that general vicinity?
No, I'd say things like that are very common misconceptions. To back up a little bit, sound is fundamentally a pressure field. It propagates out as waves through the air, not just, it's not like light, it doesn't travel like a sight. And so the idea that topography, especially on these small scales, can focus it or it causes like an amphitheater effect, uh, is misleading. If these small distances with the topography that actually exists at that site, the, the sound level differences with, with height above the ground or altitude are going to be negligible. And when I say negligible, I'm talking less than a decibel or so. So the, the height of a house compared to measuring height above the ground should have relatively low a decibel difference.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Lynch, you talked about, uh, the effect of, of, of constant noise on the human health. Are you aware of a World Health Organization study, um, that describes those effects?
There are multiple World Health Organization studies and other organizations and medical organizations trying to examine those effects.
But to the extent that those studies have been performed, they, they were talking about, uh, life in the big city, things like living next to the Pennsylvania Turnpike, uh, or a major highway, and, and how that type of sound, uh, would affect, uh, the human body. Is that correct?
Yes. So both, the preliminary studies that have been performed are, again, they're concerned with steady-state constant sound. It never goes away, it never gets a break. And typically the levels are relatively high. I mean, louder than you would, uh, experience in a typical suburban neighborhood. These are not low-level sounds.
And those are, those sounds are completely different than the sounds, uh, from woodworking tools. Is that correct?
Yes, and, and to the point, a, along the science that has shown effects is primarily through sleep disturbance. It, it's largely people's inability to rest at night. Uh, so within my report, I pointed out the CZ woodworking equipment is not compatible with use at night. It exceeds the noise organs at night. So by definition, it should be limited to daytime use. So again, the, the medical studies that have shown effects are largely due to sleep disruption, sleep disturbance, due to sound that occurs all day, all night, all the time, disrupts people's ability to relax, rest, and work.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Ryan, may I come back with one question? Or depending on what the procedure is?
We'll go in, we'll go in our same procession as we did before. Uh, keeping in mind this is for purposes of limited cross-examination. But before we dive into that, our court reporter has been typing non-stop for an hour and 45 minutes. I'd like to give her and everyone else just a five-minute recess. Thank you.
I know.
I know. If you have. And she. She. All of us. It's. I had. I mean. She. She. I want. It's. I mean. I wish. I mean. This is. That. You're. Sure. I. Oh. Just like. She's. Yeah. That's. Yeah. So. You know. Thank you. You're. I'm. Sound. So. Wait. I know this. Oh, no, not. I got. He was. He wanted to. He's. Exactly. Why? This. I will. He. Yeah. But. No. You know. I think. I. I think. Scary. All right. Yeah. All right. Um. I. I come. So. Obviously. It's. I don't. I don't. I don't. Really. You. I'm. All right. I know. I'm. So. I don't. I'm. And. So. And I'm like. I'm. This is. What? She's. Yeah. So. Every. She's. She's. She's up in the race. It's. I don't. I'm. She likes. And. Here. Oh, my. So. So. She's. So. We're gonna get started. We're. Thank you. I know. I think. I. Like. Okay. Okay, back on the record, if we may. We're gonna pick up right where we left off with re-cross examination of the applicant's expert witness. Uh, first by Ms. Boswell or Ms. Setzler.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Uh, Mr. Thornton, I'm gonna go back. Mr. Millow asked you a question and I wasn't quite sure of the answer. And I recall in your direct, you said that you were up the driveway, but a trash truck being. Did you ever take any readings on the northern portion of the property?
No, I did not take readings, uh, on the northern portion of the property up the driveway, no.
Um, didn't you say that you were walking property line when you were testing the ambient? Uh, levels?
I was walking around the property in general and just, uh, getting weighted and, and taking measurements, yes. I chose, the reason we chose the property line locations that we did, again, I keep going back to the point that sound dissipates with distance. So we chose two property lines that were the closest to, to sound source to measure the highest levels. Uh, a- as we measure further away from the garage, we will measure in a predictable fashion lower levels. So, I mean, in essence, this south and the left property line locations, the two ones that are closest to the garage aren't the worst-case loudest levels.
But you didn't test the north to verify that scientifically, correct?
No, that's correct. I did not test the north.
One of the northern, uh, property owners across the street on July 2nd, which my recollection was a Tuesday, uh, late afternoon. It was thunderstorming and it was a localized thunderstorm. And she could hear saws continuously whizzing louder than the thunderstorm. Is that consistent with ambient background noise?
I'm gonna object to that. There's no foundation for that question.
I'm asking for the ambient. Typical.
There's no foundation for the purpose of that question. Right, that, that question was based upon a July 2nd observation?
Correct.
And the ex, did the expert testify as to the weather or his observations on July 2nd?
No, we testified on weather conditions and ambient normal neighborhood noise and thunder certainly would be in that category.
Okay, could, could you repeat or rephrase your question then?
Most, most certainly. So, Mr. Thornton, would you consider thunder to be, uh, somewhat typical ambient noise in the neighborhood?
I'm gonna. Before you answer, sir, um, I'm gonna, um. I'm gonna sustain the objection and allow Ms. Setzler's more recently asked question. You may answer, sir.
Okay, I would, yes, I would, I guess that normal ambient weather events, including thunder, would be normal. It would be a noise.
And would you expect, um, to hear the sound of a saw? On the northern property line over the sound of thunder? Localized thunder?
Yeah, uh, we really have no way of answering that. I'm not sure what, how loud the person claims the saw was, was indeed from seizing woodworking. I mean, there's a lot of variables that I have no way of understanding short of observing it myself or measuring it, so I.
Would a videotape of that be of any help to you in discerning the answer to the question?
If it were calibrated, yes. If I had some way of discerning, uh, overall level, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Thornton, I, I thought you just said that the, that you, you chose the spots to test the closest part of the property boundaries. And I believe you said that the eastern boundary was the, the lowest because it's. Could you repeat what you said about your conclusion about the sound level of the easternly property boundary? Because I don't believe it matches for sure. I, I believe you, I believe you testified that the, the level is lowest at the easternly property boundary because it's farthest away. But I don't believe that is reflected in the data. Okay, since.
So again, the whole point of it less than simple is that it includes ambient and inherently the CZ woodworking sound is less than that number. So, the measurement of the eastern property boundary again includes not just the CZ woodworking sound. I make no judgment. I, I'm not throwing out or choosing any data. I'm simply reporting the loudest level observed and measured while the CZ woodworking equipment is operating at each of those points. Uh, if there are points where the ambient noise significantly contaminated and led to a higher level, I'm still reporting those, that, that information with no judgment, no, uh, interpretation there.
Now, I believe you also said that the, the levels you tested exceed, that the CZ woodworking shop levels exceeded the Norse ordinance limitations at night. Did you not say that? You said that it sees the Norse at, at night. Did, did you test at night? I, I just, I mean, and what, what do you consider night is, I guess, my question?
Well, I, I don't have an opinion tonight. The ordinance spells out times of day that are daytime and nighttime. Uh, this is simple physics. The saw makes a given amount of, or this equipment makes a given amount of noise. The propagation doesn't change at night, so the measurement of the property boundary doesn't change at night. The, the East Ocean ordinance prescribed that the maximum slow responded level cannot exceed 50 dva at the property line. The CZ woodworking equipment appears to exceed that, therefore it's not compatible with use at night. I feel like, I, I feel like from memory, I believe night starts at 7:00 PM. I might be wrong.
Okay, thank you. I, that clarifies. Any questions?
Mr. Millier, do you have any questions on re-cross examination of this witness based on the recently asked questions?
I do not.
Thank you. And the board does not have any clarifying questions at this time? Thank you. That will then conclude, uh, Mr. Thornton's testimony here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton.
Thank you.
We're at approximately, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Thornton, can you stick with us for a moment?
Sorry, I, I didn't click off until you all did.
Excellent, excellent. I, I do want to allow, uh, an opportunity for questions, uh, from those that do not have party status and are not otherwise represented by counsel. And I believe there is an individual here that may have a question or questions for you based upon your testimony.
Okay.
She's approaching the podium and will state her name and address for record and ask away.
Hi, Mr. Thornton. My name's Luanne Patrals. I live at 1409 Bramble Lane, which is, um, in the neighborhood.
Okay.
And your testimony, you said, you, you testified that, um, the noises that were being created are consistent with ambient noise in our neighborhood. And you said that, um, noises that would be inconsistent would be like heavy industrial. I think you said mining or excavation or something like that. And, and I guess my, my question is, are, are noises created by, um, circular saw, ban saws, hammers, um, air filter equipment? Aren't they more consistent with, um, commercial enterprises?
No, I, I mean, this equipment compared to what we use at a commercial level is quite small in terms of horsepower, saw blade size and things like that. So, I, you know, a saw that may be used in a commercial enterprise may have electric motors that are on the order of 100-plus horsepower. This equipment is less than a single horsepower blade. They, they use blades that are on the order of 10 feet diameter. These blades are on the order of a foot diameter. The point being, this is relatively small equipment, the type of equipment that's quite common in people's homeowner equipment shops. Uh, this is not industrial type of equipment.
Uh, and put it by a side, type of noises being created by saws are more consistent with a commercial enterprise, not a residential neighborhood?
Well, during my measurement and testing, what I experienced were lawn mowers, leaf blowers, weed whackers, garbage trucks. Uh, so I had, I measured the level and frequency content of those things inclusive of the, the ambient measurement. So, the woodworking equipment is completely consistent both in frequency content and level with the things that I actually measured in the neighborhood.
Okay, so if, if you're a person moving into East Ocean Township, then I guess you should reasonably assume that if, if you move into a home next door, your neighbors are, could be using saws? And, um, eh, eh, any kind of, um, commercial equipment, uh, eh, for instance, that, that would be in woodworking shop? That would be something that, that would be a reasonable expectation of an East Ocean Township resident?
Well, based on my experience, I mean, this woodworking equipment is very consistent with what a homeowner would have in their workshop. This is, uh, this, this equipment that people commonly use in residential woodworking shops, whether it's commercial business or not.
Mm-hmm. Um, so those sounds are, what you're saying is they're consistent with ambient noise in a residential community?
That, that's correct.
That's your testimony, okay. Would you, would you agree that when you move into a, a suburban area like East Ocean Township, that, um, eh, eh, noise in a neighborhood is, is going to affect property values?
That's a very open-ended question, but yes, it is possible that the extreme noise will affect property values.
Okay, it wasn't open-ended, it was yes or no. Does it, does it? Your answer was yes.
You know, I think this goes beyond the expertise of, of, of Mr. Thornton.
Well, I think he has testified about the ambient noise and.
He's not testing about, he's not testing about property.
If, if we could, just let's remember one at a time and let's not debate with the witness, but let's ask the witness questions, which I think he has, uh, answered unless you have any additional questions.
No, I, I think that's all, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
If I could just, uh, maybe have a couple redirect, even the questions went beyond, short of, of my initial, uh, direct.
Based solely on those questions, I'll allow brief redirect.
I believe the, the, the last person asked you a question about ambient noise that someone would expect in East Ocean Township. Is the ambient noise in that residential area in East Ocean Township different than what you would expect, let's say, um, in a, in, in a more rural area?
Yes, I, I would say that, again, based on a lot of experience, extensive measurements, uh, not by, I, what you find is that the type of neighborhood dictates the characteristic of the sound. For example, rural areas, uh, you have agricultural equipment, heavy equipment like tractors and combines and silo blowers. Uh, where residential neighborhoods, like I talked about, we have dogs and kids and lawn mowers and weed blowers, including, uh, air traffic flying over and, uh, vehicular noise on roads and side roads.
Would you expect the ambient noise in, let's say, a state park to be less than in a residential neighborhood?
Typically, yes. I, I will qualify that and that, uh, I have been called in projects where, due to commercial aviation or distant industrial sources, uh, noise levels in, in relatively isolated areas are, are quite high. But typically, yes, in a residential neighborhood is gonna be significantly louder than the state park for recreational setting.
Um, w- one of the supervisors asked you a question concerning YouTube videos. Is there any way to take readings, uh, or in listening to YouTube videos, make objective determinations?
No, this is an issue that comes about a lot of times in recreating sound. Uh, there would have to be a calibrated documented measurement change. In other words, I would have to know the, the physical, electrical properties of the measurement system, what the loudest settings are, what the recording settings are in other, in, in order to be able to make any sense out of the recording. Uh, just by changing volume knobs, you can get very high levels, very low levels, and there's no way of knowing objectively what the original sound loud is, loudness truly was.
So there's no determination that can be made from a recording on a YouTube video?
Objection, I think this is beyond the scope of Mr. Kilos' questions. Am I wrong there?
You are correct. Sustain the objection.
You already answered the question.
I have anything further? Thank you.
Uh, may I ask one, based on her question?
Sure. One.
Thank you. Mr. Thornton, I believe you said that people commonly use the types of equipment in the CZ woodworking shop in, in residential homes. So, Paul, what are you basing that? Because in the beginning, I had asked you what experience you have doing sound tests for woodworking shops and you said nothing this small. So could you, I, I just wonder, Paul, what you're basing that comment?
I have extensive experience with woodworking, friends, relatives, all lifetime of being around people who have the, know woodworking equipment. Uh, specifically measuring noise emissions from this small, eh, woodworking shop I have not done professionally before.
Have you done a study of, of woodworking shops in residential homes in East Coast, of East Ocean Township or its surrounding townships?
No, not, not before this one, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. That will conclude this witness's testimony. Mr. Thornton, now I promise you are free to.
Okay, thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Okay, we're working with approximately 25 minutes at this point, so I would ask if Mr. Thompson has any additional witnesses to present this evening?
I, I do have an additional witness. Since we have the time, we might as well proceed with my second witness. But before I, uh, call Mr. Zampa, I just wanted to say, uh, with reference to, uh, uh, members of the board listening to, uh, extrajudicial recordings, YouTube videos, things on the internet purporting to be, uh, relevant to this proceeding. Uh, I, I would, um, you know, I, I would object to anything that, that, that could be used to prejudge the application. We don't know, uh, anything about YouTube videos, um, when it comes to this hearing, we don't know if there are evidence in referring to them and specifically referring to listening to these things. Uh, I, I just wanna make a note for the record.
Okay. Your objection is noted? And just to be clear, you're not requesting the recusal of Mr. Lynch at this time?
I'm not.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to call Mr. Zampa.
Thank you. And before we proceed with the applicant's, uh, direct testimony, it's at least my anticipation that, uh, we'll proceed with his direct testimony and then likely call the timeout on this evening, uh, based on the 9:30 imposed deadline. So we'll see where we get and we'll go from there.
Uh, would you like Mr. Zampa to be at the podium? Would you like to sit? To the pleasure of the board?
Sure, if, if he can keep his voice up, we're, we're fine with him sitting there. Sure. But let us first have the witness sworn.
Testing, hello?
Good evening, Mr. Zampa. Um, could you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Christopher Zumpano. Uh, Z-U-M-P-A-N-O.
And where do you currently reside?
Uh, my wife, uh, my daughter and myself reside at, uh, 1422 Arby Circle in Rochester, New York.
And how long have you lived in your house at Arby Circle?
Uh, our summit date was November 1st of 2018, so approximately, um, nine months.
There's an exhibit in the packet marked A1 that's a deed, uh, for the property. Do you recognize that?
Uh, yes, I do.
And is that the deed indicating you, you as the owner of that property along with your wife, baby?
That's correct.
Okay. And what is your profession, Mr. Zampa?
Uh, I'm a, uh, woodworker, um, an artisan, a maker, a designer, a general contractor. I, I kind of wear many hats as a small businessman.
Do you own a business?
I do, my business, uh, I own one business, uh, currently it's, uh, CZ woodworking.
What is CZ woodworking?
Uh, CZ woodworking is something that, uh, I started back in 2011 after my garage in, uh, Glen Mills, Pennsylvania. Uh, that my, my wife had, uh, kind of, uh, given me motivation to quit my, uh, day job, wearing a suit and tie, and work 80 hours a week and try and follow my passion for woodworking. Uh, so it's a business that, uh, I've been doing since 2011. Uh, I focus on handcrafted woodworking, uh, primarily. Uh, I do a lot of, everything I do is handcrafted. Uh, it's one-of-a-kind pieces. I do not mass produce things. It's not, uh, a retail business. It's not direct sales as far as retail sales. Um, everything I do is commission-based, so I have a very, uh, I would say, like, say exclusive clientele that, uh, comes to me for, uh, one-of-a-kind pieces, which I, I produce for them. Uh, I also do general contracting as well, so I don't, uh, spend all of my time primarily woodworking. I also have a general contractor as well and work, uh, with clients in that capacity.
Okay, we're, we're gonna get, um, we're, we're gonna touch on the, the types of projects in children's CZ woodworking. Uh, but, um, where, you, you had mentioned your business being located in your garage of your previous house, is that correct?
Uh, yes, 43 Cherry Dome Road in, um, Glen Mills, Pennsylvania. It was a, uh, started in a, uh, well, one single bay of a, of a two-car garage. And, uh, that's where I started the business for three years. I operated there. Uh, it was a community, top of another community, now at least 150 homes in there. They're all about a third of an acre. Uh, and that's where I started the business and grew the business to the point where it was no longer a dream, a hobby, and actually turned into a sustainable business, uh, an income source for my family.
So let me just say there, did, did you ever have any issues with operating your business out of the garage?
Absolutely none, uh, zero. Uh, it was a very close community, uh, the neighbors perceived it very well. I did many projects for many of my neighbors, um, various projects. Actually, one of the neighbors I did many projects with was actually on the market. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Uh, yes. Uh, no issues, no issues. Let's go.
After you had the business in your garage, did you move to another location?
Correct. I moved to a secondary shop in Arden, Delaware.
And Exhibit A5 is our three photographs. If you could describe those photographs to the board?
Sure. A5 exhibit is the exterior of the building. There's four units in the building. I was on the rear first floor unit. So it was a commercial building. It was the only commercial building in a residential neighborhood, so somewhere.
And you said that was in Arden, Delaware?
Arden, A-R-D-E-N, Arden, Delaware. Correct.
I think in that picture, on the first picture, to the left and the right of the shop, you can kind of make out residential buildings. The houses are very, were the houses very close to the shop?
Very close, approximately. The closest was within, I believe, 6 feet.
Did you ever have any issues with your neighbors? Did anyone in that building have any issues with the neighbors?
No, I was there for five years and never received a complaint.
The second picture of A5, what does that depict?
That depicts the interior of the shop.
And what was the approximate size of your shop? This is the shop in Arden, correct?
Yes, correct.
What was the approximate size?
I believe it was approximately 800 square feet.
Okay, and this is essentially the same equipment that you intend to have on your proposed shop in Arden?
Correct.
And these are the tools. I'm looking at the third picture. What does that picture show?
It's a different viewpoint of the shop space.
And talking about the types of projects, you had indicated that you worked on custom projects. Exhibit A6 says Springfield Country Club Walnut Table. Is this an example? It's three pages and there are multiple pictures. Is this from your website?
Correct, it is.
Is this an example of a type of project that you worked on for CZ woodworking?
Correct.
And you, did you construct this table in your workshop?
I did.
Was it, so this is the type of project that you would complete in your workshop? Is that correct?
Very simply, yes. Correct.
And the project on A7, this is, these are two pages. Is that from your website as well?
Those are also from my website. Correct.
And what does, what are the pictures depict?
This was a remodeling project I did for a client where I actually went into their home and remodeled their foyer.
What's the percentage of work that you perform in your shop versus outside of your shop?
It's hard to quantify exactly, but I would approximately about 60% of my time is generally spent in my shop and 40% is generally spent off-site in clients' homes and on various properties.
Have you currently been working in your shop?
I have not.
Okay. Are you working off the property on a separate project?
I have. For the past five weeks, I've actually been approximately off-site on various projects.
So you don't work in your shop every day? Is that a safe assumption?
It's a very safe assumption. That's correct.
Now, before you purchased your property, did you speak with anyone at the township?
I did, yes.
Who did you talk to?
I spoke to Mark Gordon, the zoning officer.
What did Mark Gordon tell you concerning the use is permitted of the property?
In the objection.
Did anyone at the township, and this is not what Mark Gordon said, did anyone at the township tell you that a home occupation was permitted as an accessory use in the R2 zoning district?
Yes, they did.
Did anyone at the township tell you that a home occupation was an accessory use and permitted as a conditional use on your property?
Yes.
He's allowed to give his impressions about what someone at the township said. It doesn't go to the fact that the matter is certain. Someone at the township told him that. That's all that's being asserted.
I think that's all that's being asked is if the applicant wasn't informed of a right to perform the business. So I'll overrule the objection.
Did anyone at the township tell you that a woodshop was considered a home occupation?
Yes.
Did you review the definition of a home occupation in the zoning ordinance?
I did.
This is a little unusual. I'd like to object to the prior question.
I think you already answered.
Well, we don't have an opportunity to cross-examine what is supposed to be there. I'm not taking the impression of saying what someone told him in that very difficult question.
That's a fact.
The applicant, as far as I understood the questions, to me, was the applicant informed of certain rights and abilities at his property? I think his answers were yes. I don't think he repeated what any individual of the township said or might have said, or that individuals' impressions.
Well, the specific statement that was just made was that he was told that a woodworking shop is permitted accessory use, which is the whole issue here. So I would suggest that unless we have a chance to cross-examine this phantom person or on what that basis was, I mean, that's the whole issue that we're hearing.
I don't think the issue, the issue is whether or not the proposal complies with the conditional use standards, not whether or not a home occupation is, a woodshop is permitted as a home occupation.
I think Mr. Thompson's correct in his ultimate conclusion that it was not supplied for the truth of the matter asserted. So I think that that's accurate and the objection is overruled.
Mr. Zampano, I'm going to show you Exhibit Mark A8. What does that exhibit?
It's aerial view of our property at 1422 Arden Circle.
And can you describe your property at 1422 Arden Circle?
Yeah, it's 1.78 acres, about 72,000 square feet.
After you purchased the property and moved in, did you make any improvements to the property?
We did. We added a detached two-story garage. That's approximately 24 by 28 feet.
Is that the garage shown on Exhibit A9?
That's correct.
Did you get permits for that garage?
We did.
And if you could just explain what the pictures are. So the first picture of A9, that's a, what is that?
That's a picture of the detached two-car garage.
And how was that structure constructed?
It was built primarily off-site by steel structures out of Lancaster and then delivered in pieces essentially almost prefabricated and then just finished the assembly on site.
And talking about the location, how did you choose the location of this garage?
Well, actually, we did a lot of research on property prior to moving in and we felt that proximity for the intent of the garage was the best proximity from all of the neighbors' homes as well as ours for distance purposes.
Take a look at the second page of Exhibit A9. Is that the driveway in front of the garage?
That is correct.
And does that driveway continue on into the woods?
It does.
Was that the original driveway?
That was the original driveway of the property, correct.
And do you have a truck parked in that area of the driveway?
I do.
Do you park your truck there regularly?
I do, yes.
And that was in existence when you purchased the property?
The driveway was there, correct, existing.
And what is the third page depict of Exhibit A9?
That shows a perspective from my property to the adjacent neighbor's property deeds.
And is that a swing set that you, in the foreground?
That is correct.
Did you put that swing set up?
We did.
And the last picture of Exhibit A9, what does that show?
That shows a perspective from the placeet to the shop or garage.
So that would be looking, I guess, to the west. Is that correct? To the south?
To the south, south or west, I'm not sure. Yes.
Did you apply for conditional use to have a home occupation for the CZ woodworking?
I did.
Did you review the standard set forth in Section 240 32 J6 for the zoning ordinance governing home occupations?
Yes, I did.
Now, Section 32 J6, provided a home occupation must comply with the standards A through N. Did you review those standards?
That's my knowledge, yes.
At the time you submitted the application?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Concerning subsection A, is your proposed home occupation incidental to your residential use of the property?
Yes.
So what is the primary use of the property?
It's a residence. My wife and myself, my daughter live there.
Concerning subsection B, is the space in the garage that will be used for the woodshop 500 square feet inside?
Yes.
I'm going to show you Exhibit A11. What does that exhibit depict?
That's the proposed shop layout of the first floor of the shop. It's a 24 by 28 footprint and it's the 500 square feet that will be allocated to the use of the shop after the business.
Someone from the township requested you submit this diagram?
Yes, as far as our presentation to the planning commission, they had requested that we present a dimensional layout of the blueprint to showcase exactly how we plan on using the 500 square feet.
Now, the garage is larger than 500 square feet. What is the size of the garage?
It's 500, 672 square feet on the first floor.
And did Mark Gordon tell you that you could limit the interior of the property, the interior of the garage to 500 square feet?
Yes, that's correct.
And how are you doing that?
By putting in shelving and storage in the non-shop designated space on the first floor.
Is that what the shaded area is?
That is correct. It's labeled shelving in the dining room.
So the area that's, I guess, below that shelving where it says overhead door, that's going to be for personal storage. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I see stairs that go to a second floor. What is going to be on that second floor?
That'd be used for personal space as a quote-unquote "need case."
Concerning subsection C of the ordinance, will there be any change for the outside appearance of the dwelling on the property or any evidence of the home occupation visible on the property?
No.
So looking at that exhibit of your garage, is there any way to tell that there would be a woodworking shop inside?
I don't believe so, no.
Will all the activities associated with CZ woodworking take place inside that garage?
Correct.
And will the residential character of the neighborhood be changed as a result of the home occupation?
No.
Concerning subsection D, do you use woodworking tools and machines for your business that create noise?
Yes.
And are the tools that were set forth in Mr. Thornton's report, are those the types of tools that you're utilizing?
Yes.
And those are the exact tools that you propose to utilize for this use? Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Are they the types of tools that anyone could have in their garage and use for their own personal use?
I believe so, yes.
Thompson, is there a way that you can rephrase the question to make your point?
Can you buy these tools at Home Depot and slip them in your garage?
I believe any homeowner could go to any local store, including Woodcraft in downtown, Home Depot, Lowe's, any types of stores. They can order them online from Grizzly or any other jet, any company that fabricates these type of tools they have, and they could use them for their own personal use. I have many friends and many family members and other people I know that certainly utilize these as specific tools.
Do you know if the zoning ordinance has any restriction on your use of these tools for your own personal projects?
For personal use, I believe there's just a despal level. There's no despal level.
Objection to the extended calls for legal inclusion as to what the ordinance would require. There's something that's not issued.
Okay, let me rephrase the question. Is there an exception in the ordinance for the use of domestic power tools?
Yes, I believe if I use these tools for personal use, there would be absolutely no limitations whatsoever on the despal levels for the usage. It's also used between 70 and 10 P M.
Did you hire a sound expert to assess the sound levels of the tools in your garage?
I did.
And did he indicate that the tools were within the sound level set forth in the ordinance?
That is correct.
And did he present his report tonight?
Yes, he did.
Now, do you use any wood staining or lacquer products on the wood furniture that you make?
I primarily use a number of different products that are not lacquer-based. They're very green, certified, LEED certified, very organic products. I put together a packet of information for the board and for the member seater. So you can see that a lot of the products I use are organic-based. They have a lot of mineral spirits and organic seeds and plant oils in them. They're food-safe, they're VOC-free, they're family-friendly. As you can see from the data sheets on many of these products, they're very, very safe to handle and it's good.
So I've marked an exhibit, we're calling it A16. I only have one more. What is, what is that exhibit? Sorry, I made 10 copies.
That's okay. Mr. Thompson, do Ms. Boswell and Ms. Settler have one copy to share on the line?
They can take this. I know what product it is. There's...
A16. Describe what's in A16.
There's various products that they're going to use. There's Rubio Monocoat, which is a... Sorry. Apologies. Sorry. Yes, there is a, the first product is Rubio Monocoat. It's a one-coat application, a green and LEED certified product that is used to finish wood. So it's something that I can use, that I can, you can either apply it as a clear coat or you can apply with different pigments to add color or tone to the wood you're finishing. It's a very safe, zero VOC product, and it's something I use very frequently. The other products are the PolyX oil as well as the tried and true finish. So these are all, as you can see from the data sheets, very safe products that are used for my purposes.
Are these the only products that you utilize on the wood furniture that you make?
Yes, there's other products I do use, but there are also things such as general finishes, salad bowl finish and different types of mineral spirits and oils that are all also very green and very safe to use.
So these don't produce VOCs?
No, they all, as far as I know, all of them are produced, zero VOCs.
Do you use any protective equipment when you buy these materials?
Generally, I always will wear a mask or gloves just as I handle things, just as an adequate measure.
You do this inside your shop, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Do you do any furniture stripping?
I do not. At the present time, I do not.
What is furniture stripping?
It's a process, I guess, of taking old, worn down wood pieces of furniture or going in to finish, taking them down with their wood and refinishing them.
You don't do that?
No.
Okay, back to the standards for a home occupation. Concerning subsection E, will there be any outside storage on the property associated with CZ woodworking?
No.
How do you bring the wood to your shop?
Generally, I source the wood myself. I don't get deliveries as I like to hand-spare the material I'm using for each product or project. I think it's very important that I'm able to get eyes and hands on each piece that I'm putting into a handcrafted piece of furniture. So it's probably the most important step of the process. So I like to be there from the very beginning to purchase and select the wood myself.
And any waste wood? Do you dispose that wood off-site?
Correct.
Concerning subsection F, do you comply with all the requirements of any regulatory agencies that have jurisdiction over you?
I believe so, yes.
Are there any that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Have you ever been issued a citation from the zoning officer or anyone else for what in East Goshen Township? Or has any determination been made if you are wholly or partly in violation of the township ordinance?
No.
Okay. Now, do you have any employees?
No.
Let's talk about the hours of operation. In the application, you think the hours of operation were indicated to be 7 to 5. What do you propose now?
I propose the 7 to 7 P M. I propose the 7 to 7 p.m.
Would the home occupation be open to the public?
No.
Do you want members of the public on the property that you live on?
My wife could probably answer that question rather than me, but absolutely not.
Do you have any parking area that you've designated as parking associated with the home occupation?
I have. If there was someone coming on the property, they would park directly in front of the shop itself. We have a very large driveway and turn around, so we believe there's ample space there to park.
And exhibit A12 is a diagram, I believe, that you drew of the property. Is the parking area shown on that diagram?
That is correct.
And is that the red area that says parking?
Correct.
And how many cars did you fit in that area?
I would imagine at least three or four.
Do you anticipate more than four delivery vehicle trips per day associated with your proposed home occupation?
No.
Kind of deliveries do you have at your house?
Just typical Amazon-type deliveries, nothing commercial or that's just what your average homeowner would have as far as being delivered to the property on a daily basis.
So on occasion, you do have items associated with the business delivered by delivery trucks?
Referring to UPS or Amazon, yes, correct.
But not wood materials?
No.
Do you anticipate any more than eight trips a day associated with your proposed woodshop?
No.
These are vehicular trips?
Vehicular trips, no.
Subsection F permits one sign not to exceed two square feet. Do you intend to have a sign in compliance with the section?
Yes.
And is that the sign shown on exhibit A13?
Yes, that's correct.
Would this sign be visible from the road?
No.
Do you want to advertise your business to people in the neighborhood?
Absolutely not, no.
Do you anticipate generating any solid waste or sewage discharge in volume or type which is not normally associated with residential uses in the neighborhood?
No.
Do you anticipate any large quantities of solid waste beyond those normally associated with the residential use?
No.
Now, did you review the general standards applicable to all conditional uses in section 240, 31 C2 of the zoning ordinance?
I don't recall, sorry.
Well, let me just ask you the question. Will this use create any significant hazard to the public health, safety? Health and safety?
No.
Not limited to fire, toxic or explosive hazards? Anything that you do cause explosions?
No, no.
And in your opinion, is this use suitable for your property?
Yes.
Did you look for a property like this in order to utilize it for this type of use?
Yes, we looked at hundreds of properties.
And why do you believe this property was better than the other ones you've looked at?
Well, we looked at the square footage of the property itself, the layout of the property, the topography, the proximities to the neighborhood, to the neighbors, to the closest property lines and just the general outline of the property seemed to be a perfect fit for what we were hoping to do.
And the garage, is that in harmony with the character of the existing neighborhood?
Absolutely.
Will this use be detrimental to any properties in the vicinity?
No.
Do you believe you have adequate setbacks, buffering, burming, screening or controls to avoid any conflicts with your neighbors?
Yes.
Any issue with public services or facilities such as water, sanitary sewage, police, fire protection?
No.
And again, no additional traffic will be generated from this use beyond that which is already associated with the existing residential use?
Correct.
Anything related to the preservation or restore or restoration of historic buildings on the subject property?
No.
And you mentioned that you paid particular attention to the areas you constructed the garage. Was that due to the existing natural topography and other natural resources on the site?
Yes.
And finally, do you know if the township has permitted any other woodshops as a home occupation on a residential property?
Yes, I put out a request, a right to know. The township just acquiring as a curiosity to see if there's any additional woodworking shops or home occupations related to woodworking in the township.
And is that exhibit A15, is that what you received based on your right to know request?
Yes, there was, that is correct. There was one permit that's been issued in East Scotia Township.
And that's what A15 is, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And who was that permit issued to?
It was for A11 East Tresport Road for Mr. Lewis Brecksmann.
And that's the township manager?
That is correct.
I don't have any further questions from Mr. Sampa.
Thank you. I think at this time, it would be appropriate, seeing as though we're slightly past 9:30, to call a recess on this evening's proceedings and establish a date for a subsequent hearing, seeing as though we are not yet done. With that said, I'm going to ask that we go off the record for the establishment of a new hearing date. Okay, so this will be kind of an informal discussion among parties in an effort to establish a new hearing date. Generally, it's the preference of this board, not only the preference, but the practice of this board to meet on Tuesday evenings, seeing as though that's the regularly scheduled meeting. Thanks. Right, okay. So with that said, I think we're meeting on the second Tuesday of July currently. Logically, that would then leave the 23rd of July, so I'll ask the applicant. There is a fifth Tuesday in July. It is the 30th. Is there availability among all parties?
30th of July?
Correct.
Starting vacation, I think.
Understood. It is the summer after all. The first Tuesday in August is a standard board meeting, correct? So we would then look to Tuesday, August 13th. That's probably our best bet, seeing as though that's the second Tuesday in August, this being the second Tuesday in July. Does that work for all parties? Does that work for the board?
Yeah.
Going once, going twice, no? Okay. We will go back on the record briefly to establish a new hearing. Based on discussions with all parties, council and members of the board, we have landed on a date of Tuesday, August 13th, 2019 at 7:00 p.m. to reconvene and continue the proceedings for the public hearing on the CZ woodworking conditional use application. Is there any objection of any party to that date and time? 7:00 p.m. I'm sorry if I misspoke.
There's a possibility that we will have an expert test, an expert test waiting and so we don't know if that person's available at the public party.
Okay.
A person and available at the party.
Very good.
We have another expert witness who is involved in municipal government and as to in meetings as well. So we will do our best to try to accommodate that, but maybe the people probably can't move. Just trying to say that.
Understood. As of now, though, I'm hearing no objections for Tuesday, August 13th, correct? All right, so being on the record, we will establish that date and time here at the East Scotia Township Building. And before we recess this evening, I would just ask Mr. Thompson on the record to waive the NPC timeframes associated with the conditional use application to the extent necessary, including the timeframes in which the proceedings must conclude as well as the timeframes under which the board would have to render a decision on the application.
I'd be willing to waive them as it relates to the August 13th date. I don't know if we want to see this going too far into the fall, so that's what I'd be willing to do.
Understood. So just so the record is clear, you are waiving the NPC timeframes associated with this application through Tuesday, August, through and including Tuesday, August 13th, 2019.
Correct.
For the conclusion of the proceedings, keeping in mind that the board would then have 45 days thereafter to render a decision.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Thank you. I believe that's all for this evening. Thank you all.